Go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll go ahead and read.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion regarding the approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Hearing a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the action item, there is an emergency levy for the 2021-22 school year to be presented by administration.
So, I want to also welcome the building admin here in case there's specific questions about their school. There's one admin from his school here. So, thank you all for coming. You know, it's busy the first week and it's the last day of the first week, so thank you. So, we did not do an emergency levy last year. Obviously, we had COVID. It was a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic and our enrollment was not up. The prior three years that I was here, we did an emergency levy. The intention prior to us asking the board to approve the emergency levies were only for bubble class sizes, meaning we didn't always go for the full amount and we didn't do it just because it was possible. The intention of going to the school board to ask for approval on the emergency levy was based on when we have new enrollment and it comes in the first week of school, we would like to be able to ask the board to consider an emergency levy for those bubble class sizes for staffing and technology and pieces that we need to do to support the new students. So, that's what we're coming today and we're going to do a presentation based on the numbers and the financial pieces and then what does it really look like in the classroom? What will that look like for our staff? So, I'd like to start with Mr. Wallace, the CFO.
Chairman, members of the board. So, this presentation I've given a few times, if not last year, as Dr. Meyer noted that we didn't qualify for it two times last year. The first thing I'd like to include as part of your packet is just I O Code 3305 and that, you know, school emergency fund levy, the title of the law, just so you can have the statute with you for your reference in the school district's authority to pass an emergency levy. And that section has described sort of the method of how school districts can first qualify and then how you calculate the amount that you could qualify for. So, I'm not going to go into the details of that, but the first part of qualifying is you have to have more kids than last year and the comparison is the first three days of school. So, the first three days of school compared to this year compared to the first three days of school last year. So, that's the comparison. And so, for this year, and you take the average of the three days. So, for this year, we've averaged 4,718 kiddos over the three days. A couple of days are higher, a couple of days lower, but that was the average. And when you compare that to last year with 4,341, same count, same comparison, we're at 377 kids. I'd like to note that that 4,718 is the highest number that the districts ever had. Even the year prior to COVID in 2019-20, I think our high was 4,600 or something. But 4,718 definitely is the biggest districts ever been in its history, so we definitely are above. So, the next page in the packet is complication emergency school levy. This is a form that's provided by the State Department. And there's two parts to this form. First, they say, well, what was your attendance this year? 4,718. What were your attendance last year? 4,341, so you're up 377 kids. So, then they said, well, how much do you get per student for those 377 possible? And so, you calculate that based on last year's apportionment. And so, last year's apportionment, we had 23,772,443 and I get that from the actual SBU report. And then, what was our average attendance throughout the year based on how we generate that 23 million? Again, that's a final State Department of Education report as we reported that data last year. And so, if you take 23 million divided by 4,312, that gives us a dollar amount of 5,513 per student. So, that's all this form is really doing. And then, if you took 5,500 times 377, the emergency budget, the maximum emergency budget that the board gets certified would be 2,78,401. As Dr. Meyer said, the board sometimes approves a full amount, sometimes the board approves a partial amount, sometimes the board's approved none. But, so you don't have to do the 2 million or you can find something in between if that was the board's desire. The other caveat, just for your information, is that by law, an emergency levy cannot exceed 0.006, that's 60 cents per thousand of taxable value. So, I have to estimate our market value, so that's an estimate of our September market value. We'll get real numbers in December, but it's an estimate. And so, we're below that. If even close to a million, we'd be at 44 cents per thousand, less than the 60. I think that doesn't really come into play for our district too much, but it certainly could for some districts with small tax bases depending on the dollar amount. So, what is that? Any questions on how we calculate those numbers?
No.
Okay. So, the next page has a lot of information and I'm just going to go over it quickly and then let Ms. Sexton and Ms. Pazley talk about program needs. I'm just talking about the dollars and some of the impact that the taxpayer estimated in that. So, this, as I go in here, I'm sorry, it's busy. So, what I put, as I first put right here, this year's, actually last year's tax information. So, we had a market, our market value of 4,285 million. We collected in levy, 11.6 million dollars. And that's our supplemental levy, our client facility levy, our bond levy. All our levies combined, that was the dollar amount. And so, that, and if you saw in tax bill, that our levy rate last year was $2,72. For next year, or I should say this year coming out, here's the estimated market value, which is approximately 10% more than last year. That's the estimate. Our current levy collections with budget, if we move forward, were very close to what we're doing last year. Our supplemental went up, our bond levy went down, it was sort of a wash. And so, our levy rate, because of our increase in market values, you know, is anticipated to go down to $2.48. That won't be defined, we'll know when it is in December, but you know, our rate would go down because we're collecting not the same $100 and market value is higher. And of course, there's no emergency levy, no emergency levy rate. So, the next, I have 1, 2, 3, 4, and then 22. And I just picked some numbers just to give, they're not set in stone, just to give some comparisons to the board, to sort of see the impact. So, if we add a 500,000 emergency levy, given the estimated market value, that would be 11 cents per thousand to the taxpayer. So, our rate would go from 2.48 to 2.59 as the estimate. And then, you can see a million. It goes up to 21 cents, so every 500,000, 2.69 and again, 21 goes to 32, 11 cents. 2.80 and then we did the whole 2,78, it'd be 44 cents per thousand like that, as she shows. So, that's just sort of showing the incremental impact to our patrons if there weren't any of that. And finally, just to give you some annual cost comparisons, I threw in an annual cost and so each column is, this is the current status of this year. This is, I mean, last tax year, this is this year, given no emergency levy and the assessments we will have. And then, 1, 2, 3, and 4, if we add 500,000, a million, 1.5 million or the full authority. And so, every line is really the same comparison, just if you have a higher value house. And so, taxable value, when this is looking at, you gotta remember now that owner's exemption is 125,000. So, this would be at 275,000 dollars, that 150, just if you want to think about that. Because it's on, the 125 is in tax, if they put the exemption in. But, so for last year, if you had 150,000 dollars of taxable value, you would have paid 408 dollars. If you have 150,000 dollars taxable value this year, because the rate's going down, you'd be paying less. And then, of course, if you add dollars, that's sort of the impact and it's just on the different values of your house. And I think I have a typo here. I apologize for that. I just did it twice. I might 4.50 and five a lot.
That's not the averaging.
Okay, so I did it twice. And then, the only difference I did here, down here, is just the monthly cost. I just took these numbers and divided by 12, just so you could sort of see the monthly impact. Sometimes, I've had folks in the past ask me that question. So, that's just sort of the dollar. I know there's a lot of information, it's busy. I'm gonna hand it over to Ms. Sexton and Ms. Pazley and they can go over the program needs and then if you want to go back to some of this and have that conversation if you can.
Okay.
So, we we met with our wonderful admin team yesterday looking at our, some of our class sizes, who we have large numbers of students in the classroom and spent some time together prioritizing, recognizing that we have work policy in place that tells us what our ideal classroom sizes should be. Recognizing that we have enough bubbles that we can't meet the letter of what's in the policy. We, our conversation was how do we get as close as possible to that? Recognizing that in similar classrooms, there are a lot of really little bodies and there's a lot of important learning that has to happen. And I think it's important to note, just going through COVID and it's not, you know, going away and just having here and that, we definitely have some inherent time finish learning across the district and all around the classrooms. So, just recognizing the smaller we can make those classes, the more we can maximize learning for our students.
Madam Chair, I don't have this presentation connected to the agenda.
Yeah, none of us do.
Oh.
Yeah. Well, we just got, we had, this was in a special merge, so we couldn't get it done. We just finished it a couple hours before the meeting, so she can share it with you.
Okay.
So, if you want us, so that you can have it on your computer.
Yeah, that would be great. Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
So, this is part of our spreadsheet that we look at. It allows us to follow our enrollment trends and so the district leadership team meets weekly. And this is one of the documents that we look at every week, just so that we're paying attention to where kids are and what needs we might have. So, down the side, we have our 12 schools across the top in pink. Those are, when, in elementary schools, used to be accredited by the state. Those were the merit numbers, so those are just that we had to have in those grade bands in order to be accredited by the state. That process has gone away, but that's historically, those have historically been the numbers we've tried to shoot for. And these numbers are a little bit different than what's in our new policy, so I just wanted to get you.
And also, these pink numbers here, the numbers that are in pink, in our negotiated agreement with press speakers who was on the IDP team with us, if we go over these numbers for K 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, we do pay an amount to the teachers over that amount, so that isn't a negotiated agreement, you just swipe them.
And so, then you can see right below the pink, all of our grade levels are identified and then we look at, let's look at John Brown just so we can see. So, you can see the number of teachers by grade level and then we've taken, there's a formula in there, so we've taken the number of students who are at that grade level divided by the number of teachers to get those class sizes. So, where it says 21.5, obviously, we don't cut children in half, so we have 21 in one classroom and 22 in another classroom. But that's just a quick kind of look at for us. So, I'm gonna let Dr. Pazley talk about some of the spots at the elementary and then I'll talk about the secondary. So, we tried to highlight for you, so it just, you can see it clear, the areas that we're super concerned about. So, at John Brown, we have second grade sitting at 27 and 27. And again, take into account, we have struggling learners, we have learning loss, there's been lots of absences, missed school time, so 27 is really hard. And then, you add in our students with disability and then you add in students with behaviors and it definitely makes, it's hard without new kids. At fourth grade, she's sitting at 29 and 30. Spirit Lake just decided to have a new bunch of kids. So, at first grade, this is the most concerning for me, her school, Ms. Price. She has 28 in a first grade class, 28, 28. She has 31, 32 in a second grade class, 29 and 30 in a third grade class, and then a fifth grade class, 28 and 29. Apple has really large fourth and fifth grade classes. Benny Kiefer has a large fourth grade class. Garwood has a really large fifth grade class. And the other thing, other thing, other thing, this is when we're starting, like typically when we do this, we don't want to max out those classes when we first start, but you know there's going to be continued growth, growth in. And what we don't want to have happen is there's a child that lives directly across the street from, let's just say, Garwood and we have to send him to another school because the school's packed. So, and then at Twin Lakes, the two grades that are most concerning for me are first grade and second grade. So, 26 and 26 in a class and then 27 and 27. So, really large classes across the board in second grade and in fifth grade. So, I mean, I would tell you, we're pretty close to maxing out in some of those grades. At Lakeland Middle School, we have 30 sixth graders in every single sixth grade classroom in that building. I believe that we have seven there, seven classrooms. At our two comprehensive high schools, I want to talk a little bit about what that FTE looks like. This is a little bit deceiving, simply because it's impossible to, at any given period, a teacher might be teaching a classroom with freshmen and sophomores in it or freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors. And so, what we did to just kind of compare our staffs as far as class sizes was, we took how many certified staff in that building and divided by the four grade levels. So, that's why they're exactly even. You can see 10.2 or 7.5. But at both Lakeland High School and Timberlake High School, our freshman classes are large and causing a little bit of concern at the master schedule. So, at Lakeland High School, we have around 30 kids in our algebra one and our geometry classrooms. And because math is such a focus for us and those are two courses that have to be passed for graduation, it's really important that those students have some ability to have some one-on-one time with the teacher. Those are large class sizes for those classes. And at Timberlake High School, out of the 20, he's got 24 elective classes that have 30 students in them or more. So, he really needs another elective teacher to help raise some of those class sizes down. So, those are some of the hotspots that we've been looking at. Do you have any questions about this spreadsheet and what any of these numbers represent? And this is our last slide. So, as I said earlier yesterday, we met with our admin team and just started brainstorming, what is it going to take to get our class sizes to where we can have meaningful interactions between students, students do the best that we can do to provide a high-quality education for every single student. And recognizing you have to, with classrooms, with all of the same needs. So, we started off by just talking about how many certified teachers do we, ideally do we need to get our class sizes where education should be for kids? So, that, at 12.2, that seems like a strange number, but we have one teacher at Lakeland Middle School right now who teaches four periods a day, so she's a point eight. And if we had just added one more period to her, that'd help alleviate some of the stress with electors versus graders. So, that's where that 12 is. And then, 10 classified FTEs, so some para support. We had, we definitely had conversation about, this isn't a pie in the sky. You know, dream big, what do we want to ask the board for? This is, what is the bare minimum that we think we really need to make an impact for kids? So, there are classrooms where we have higher numbers. And our principal said, you know, if I just had a para, a full-day para to work with the teachers, I think we could make it. So, that's why we have some of that. And then, some of those class sizes have to be, but it's also helping address some of our, if a teacher had to do a combo, combos can be really hard to teach. And so, being able to separate and support a little bit better, making, again, those rooms a little bit smaller. So, some of that is addressing some of our combos. At Garwood, because they're the school that has really ballooned this year, he's feeling like he needs just one more newly de-personed to kind of help with supervision of all of those little chairs outside. Because we have, how many volleyball professors here?
60.
60 volleyball students at Timberlake Middle School, so we needed, we're gonna need to add a volleyball coach there.
And we did, just to interject, we did have on the levy, remember I go with that policy that we have on the instructional levy for middle level? So, we wanted to adhere to that, but we promised the taxpayers, that's my guess.
And then, we have 5.5 teachers teaching on prep and I couldn't remember off the top of my head what that number was when I put this together. It's, Becky has it off, 86.50 is what you said to me today, so I just estimated 8,500. But basically, this means that we have five teachers who will teach the full year, all six periods, no prep for them. And so, we pay them this stipend to teach all the prep. And then, there is one teacher at Timberlake High, or Lakeland High School who will only be teaching on her prep for one semester, so that's the 25. And then, we're gonna talk about some of the other classrooms.
And just real quickly, the reason that is like that, I think she alluded to it earlier, when you have huge class sizes and you just, if you could just split that and help uncongest the master schedule, we don't need a half-time teacher necessarily for that or a full-time teacher. We just need one more period of geometry, one more period of, you know, world cultures or something like that. So, that's where that 5.5 comes in.
And so, the next area is teacher tax. So, you know, fitting a classroom with hover cam, making sure that the teacher has the PC, that she has, or here she has Chromebook. Chromebooks for all of those new students, so if you're in 77 new students, it's about 350. Those new classrooms would have to have phones through Agnetics and then the license, so that's roughly about $30 a month. And then, for some of our, just really trying to make space for our kids, there are several buildings that are pretty maxed out and there's lots of furniture that we're having to store in the gyms. And so, combining, just doing three pods instead of doing multiple pods at three locations so we can store some of that stuff, storage is a huge problem in a lot of our buildings. And then, increasing bills and budget because students are coming in. And then, Lisa and I kind of estimated just curriculum for all the assessments, all of the science, social studies, math, reading, all that additional curriculum that we need to purchase for them is roughly five dollars in a new classroom for classroom, and that includes any furniture.
Right.
To buy tables or chairs or desks, teacher desks. And that's all that we have. Do you have any questions about anything on this?
So, based on the population, we need to create 13 new classrooms? Okay.
And that still leaves us with a couple that we're, that we're watching. But we feel like with some assistance from parents that we can make those manageable. And you can see that the total here is 1.4 million. We definitely didn't want to come with, come to you with a request to take the entire $2 million that you could authorize, so we really, we're very intentional about what, what do we, what's the bare minimum that we need to try to get as close to what our board policy asks us to do as possible. And we can honor those instructional needs that are going to be so important.
Okay. Do the buildings all have the capacity to add the classrooms?
If I can hear the question. Do they all have the capacity to add classrooms? So far, yes, but Garwood is probably the fullest, most full at this point. But Ms. Massey and I talked about it, again, we can address the additional needs at this building right now. Our intention, we did look, just so the boards are aware, we did look and this team has worked, has several meetings, like what if we took 30 kindergartners and moved them to other where there was space? And we've looked at that. We actually had a whole plan in place. We have moved a few fifth graders from Garwood to other, other schools. But what happens is the domino effect. So, I'll give you an example. We moved some fifth graders over to Twin and all of a sudden, they have more. And so, we have to move them to Benny Kiefer and all of a sudden, they have more and so we have to move them to John Brown. But then, they have combos, so they got down a teacher and it becomes a domino effect. Then, we go back to the, my concerns, we go back to those families, say, oh, now you have to go back to Garwood again. We've already finished the first week of school. Our, we want to keep people in their homeschool families as much as possible because they moved there for a reason, they want to be in their neighborhood school. That is on our levy, talk about small, reasonable class sizes at your neighborhood schools. So, this is not going to create any teeny class sizes that you could go back to that slide. It definitely is going to just still have some room for growth at a few schools, but nothing that's going to, nothing that's going to create small class sizes.
My goal was reasonable.
Reasonable. And if you want to ask, or Chair Thompson, if you want to ask any of the principals to help their buildings, they can certainly address that, probably more specifically than I can.
Okay.
You said there were going to be three pod locations? Where were those planning?
So, I don't know that we really decided, but the three that we talked about yesterday was Benny Kiefer, Garwood, and Spirit Lake.
And those are the storage containers that you see on the buy food service.
I mean, it makes sense because it'll free up room in the schools.
Yeah, we had, we had rented, almost every school I've rented. And then, this year during the summer, we sort of put the furniture back in, except for a couple. The one at food service. And also, we have a couple now on maintenance that are really supporting Lakeland Middle School because they're filling up with the sixth grade and we're storing. We used to store paper at the middle school, now the paper's out.
So, do any of the numbers that we're seeing there, which I noticed the reach went down, about 20 kids, I think from the last 88 or whatever it was. How many of those are dual enrollment in these schools are? I mean, how does a dual enrollment or homeschool kids or kids that, like this isn't their primary education? They're maybe taking one or two classes. Were they removed from the calculations or?
We did have some Gen C prep and maybe you can come up with better than I can, but we have some Gen C prep. Some kids that are dual enrolled and only utilize us for a few periods a day, those students would be in our ADA. They are in the here.
If they show up the first day we count.
Okay.
Yeah, and so, there's a few K-Tech kids also.
Okay.
And typically, just for numbers, it's, generally for our district, our highest enrollment number, when you get the most kids, is really sort of October. So, this month, we'll start gathering some and then often later in the year, secondary numbers might go down. Even though, like last year, that didn't happen for us. When we grew last year, we had the most kids these year, which is COVID. Everything's upside down. But generally, with our capacity talked about as far as, you know, we know that we have the classes are big. We want to have a little bit of capacity. That's true. We will, October usually is our highest count. Just as families get settled and then sort of stays there for a while, maybe slides just a little bit in the spring.
And that's without the construction, that's just in a normal given year. We just continue to rise. So, you have any construction, that makes it harder.
Yeah. And what was the number that we discussed recently about the out-of-district enrollments? Although I understand some are grandfathered in, what do we remember? What do we remember what that number was?
Proceed to, we haven't even got it for you.
Okay.
We had no new.
Right.
This year.
Right. I think there were, she was going to look at it and make sure that.
Okay. And then those, I know with the one family that had come before the board. Those that are allowed to enroll out of district, do they all agree to pay the tax or no? They're just, they pay no tax?
We can't, we, we do that. They have to pay taxes in their home base.
Sure.
So any one of those grandfathered in, they still are paying their tax in Modern County and Lake Hurry School District or West Bonner School District. Or Portland, or wherever they were grandfathered. They pay their taxes in their district.
Right.
And their district gets their money.
Right.
And then what we have from them is their ADA when they're here. And those are the, that's the grandfathered one. When I came, there was a, they took anybody when we first, when I first got there, they were taking anybody. But as you know, the growth. It was CC'd on an email that went to a patron up in Spirit, like asking, why can't we do this? I don't think sometimes when people move in, they realize the tax difference between the districts. So that's why, two years ago, we said, we can't take anybody else at all. And last year, we didn't take anybody out at all. And the anticipation at Spirit Lake, it's right up over that whole group. They are still, it's still down at the state level being decided. So it still hasn't been decided yet.
Do we remember what that policy is that you keep referring to? Oh, I got it. The class size twenty-two forty, everything. The negotiated agreement isn't in alignment with that. It was agreed to go larger and then step in above.
Yeah. The negotiated agreement, we did put that Chairman Thompson on the agenda for next year because we'd already finished IBB and then Paul, you guys did the policy. So now with IBB next year, interest based levy, we will put that on the policy to align it to the board policy.
Okay.
So that will be aligned for the next IBB process.
That's fine. I just know that the numbers on the IBB are greater than what's on the policy, which I understand the steps of, I guess, confusion. But the numbers within the IBB agreement are what we're trying to accommodate, correct? Not what's in our policy?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, we'll do whatever the board will decide.
Yes, I was just gonna say, if you want to honor your policy, every single person is getting that.
I would love to honor that policy.
But to try to find the sweet spot between that, that and where we want for the taxpayers. To try to find that middle ground that we've talked about is what we feel that the plank that this plan we presented, we feel is the bare minimum to try to be physically conservative while also making sure that the reasonable class sizes that we promised the patrons. And we did not do pie in the sky. These guys were, okay, do you guys really need that? Did we do that?
Oh, no, I believe that. Firmly believe that. My, my biggest concern though is, I know we're not going through our plant facility levy because of the response we had to the previous levy that we just barely passed. And we told everyone we would not be raising the tax base. So that, that their tax base would be dropping because things were falling off and that.
I didn't, I never ever said to anybody that wasn't going to increase the taxes. That definitely wouldn't have.
Would have been said.
I don't want to promise people that. I just said that we weren't going to go to the plant facility levy. Because once the board voted on that, we're not going to do a plant facility levy. We're going to bridge it, try to bridge it with S R dollars. So.
Okay.
I, I think that one thing the board really needs to take into consideration, if you go back to Brian's, no, we're thinking of one. If you go back down to, go down to the monthly amount, and if you ask any taxpayer who, whether they have kids in the system or not, if they want to have their monthly, monthly fifty cents, so that they have a twelve point two teachers and their class sizes are reasonable. They would say, I will pay double that, triple that for me to make sure that our kids are in reasonable class sizes. People move here for that very reason. And if we ignore that piece of what the patrons want, I think that will degrade our, you know, our instruction that we have. Taxation.
The problem is though, we don't know that they want that. And so what would it take to put this out for a vote and let the patrons vote? Because I, I don't feel right about just making it a decision for people and without them having a voice on that.
Well, this is the law. We can't let it out for vote. Any of the board hears it, they look at the numbers and then the board makes the decision.
Chair, or Chair Thompson?
Yeah.
When you talked about the rate, now going up, if you look at this part, last year's levy rate was two dollars and seventy-two cents. If the board approved one point five or one point four, because that's basically what we're asking for. The levy rate is two dollars and eighty cents, which is right about where we were last year. So it's not a significant increase, it would be eight cents.
It isn't a significant increase. I agree. My concern is, is it was championed that your taxes will stay the same or they'll go down. That's not going to happen now if we pass this emergency levy. And that bothers me. What's that?
They would stay the same. This is last year. Two dollars and seventy-two cents. And if we did one point four million, this is going to be right around two dollars and seventy-five cents.
But we, I just, I want to put it on record. We do not ever, Brian has cautioned us over the last six years. We don't ever tell people their taxes will not go down because we cannot say that. And if we do not say that, because you may get out of barn, you may be reassessed. The sex and the taxes has gone up several hundred thousand dollars over the last couple of years because she hadn't been assessed for ten years prior. Other people built around her, increased her taxes. So we don't ever tell people your taxes won't go down. So that is not an accurate statement. We do not say that. I did say, we are not going to do, do a plant facility. The board has voted not to do a plant facility levy. So that will be coming off the rolls. That would lower your tax rate.
Right.
Yes, we said definitely tax rate.
Well, we didn't have any of that discussion when we were trying to pass the first levy. So the plant facility levy came about just recently. So I'm talking about when we just passed the last levy, what was said to the constituents. That's just my concern, watching what transpired and how we barely got it passed. So I just want to be cognizant of the fact that people are very concerned about their taxes and the effect the school has on them. So that's all I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
And I'm fully aware that our classes are too large. I personally want them to get lower. So I'm, I'm, I'm and building size. And I mean, there's a lot that has to go into that. So I'm not just saying, make it happen and work with nothing. So.
So the budget for this year was based on how many students?
I think about forty-five hundred.
Yeah, forty-five hundred.
Yeah. I mean, I didn't go all the way back up to our max of forty-six. I, we were forty-four something. I thought we'd add some, so it's forty-five. So if we even get from there, we have over two hundred.
So for me, it makes sense from a, a parent that has children in the school district. If we hire enough teachers to teach forty-five hundred and then the first week of school, we have forty-seven hundred. We have to hire more teachers. I mean, it's, since my, my perspective, since the eighties, people moved to this district because of small class sizes.
Right.
I mean, I'm talking, I remember that theme thirty years ago. And it's the same today. People are doing their searches. They're wanting to know, they're moving here because of the school district.
Oh, I know. I've been in it over twenty years. I get it.
So you see it. You've seen it. So I think you and I are on the same page as far as, you know, class sizes. That's so important to the quality of education because those kids get more one-on-one.
Right.
Then, so I mean, it's, you know, it's not a matter of, for me, it's not a matter of, it's a matter of class size and quality of education. And we've always had a higher standard than the school districts around us. I just can't, I mean, you know, you hire a certain amount of teachers for a certain amount of kids and more, more kids show up. I mean, there's no real, in my mind, there's no real, you know, there's no real question because we have to keep the class sizes, you know, manageable for our teachers. So I mean, I, I would argue that with any patron, whether they have kids or not in the school district, because that's what our school district is founded on really.
Sure.
So, I mean, I would have that conversation with anybody, even when my kids are out of school. I want the kids that are coming out of the school district to have a good education because they're the, they're the gen, the future generation. So I mean.
I agree.
Without a doubt. Well, that being said, I would like to see the plant facility levy maybe come, come back to the board and have another look at that. So that people could actually have a vote on it and we could get a real pulse on what the, what the public and what the taxpayers want. I don't feel good about pushing something through without, without the, the vote of the people.
The plant facility levy can only be used for facilities. We're not asking for facilities on this. This is people.
Sure. And there's money for the, okay, well, that's something I guess to think about.
And just for, after that, just the plant facility is active this year.
Correct.
Just, yeah. This is the last year of that.
Right.
I can appreciate champion patrons, but, you know, I champion the kids first.
Well, I totally agree, Rob. I, I am in complete agreement and I, I really agree all.
There's no question in my mind.
I, I voted for smaller classrooms in, when I, when I asked to, you know, when I voted yes on the policy that gave the classroom sizes. So I am, I am in total agreement with this. I think that the whole picture needs to be looked at as well. And absolutely, kids deserve this. They absolutely do. I think it's short sighted to look at one side of it. Though I think we need to look at all sides of it because we're here to represent the kids and the constituents. So I respect where you're coming from and I totally agree.
I appreciate that you're not asking for the full maximum amount that you're coming forward with the one point four million. Has there been? Is there, I shouldn't say has there, is there any room in the budget at all to accommodate any of these needs that are being asked for on this new emergency levy? Has that even been looked at? Or did we just go to the emergency levy?
Well, I, I guess that's a matter, we have to keep the budget on a balanced budget, which is by law required to do. So he's already allocated everything, thinking that forty-five hundred kids are going to come based on the budget. So can any of this go into that budget? We have to give up something for that to happen.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I'll give you a pause for a minute.
Yeah.
Trustee Bane, I'm going to call her on speakerphone. She's, we're not able to hear her now.
Oh.
So that she can add to this.
Hello.
Hello.
So this is what, this is what, this is where my, my brain went with this whole thing. If we budgeted at forty-five hundred. So last year was forty-three hundred. And now we're looking at forty-seven. But we're budgeting for forty-five. That puts us at about two hundred kilos. At that rate, it's about one million two hundred thousand, which would put us at an increase of point two five, which would actually put us right at two point seven three for the levy rate. So it would only be minus two, in comparison to the increase over last year's levy rate. I mean, from two point seven two to two point seven three, it would keep us at, you know, I'm sorry, to, to the rate and not increase, if that's what we're concerned about. I definitely want to keep our class size small. I want, I want our, our kilos to be the priority for sure. But I also hear the voice of our, our constituents and, and know that, you know, they're, they're all trying to make ends meet. And I just wanted to kind of try and find that, that happy medium. That's where my financial brain went. So.
Thank you, Randy. I appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Said, the budget is, is still in place for everything that was done for the forty-five hundred. We haven't considered the fact that maybe some of this could be accompan, accommodated in the budget because there might be stuff that doesn't necessarily have to be. The only reason I'm asking this is because I know you've come back with, you know, the levy, some of it wasn't used for what we had said it was going to be because certain things we've cut down on. We said we wanted to spend forty-five hundred dollars or forty-five, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for repairs at the junior high, but that all didn't happen because of other things and the money went into a difference, different way, et cetera. So that's why I'm just curious, with respect to the budget, how much of it, I mean, have we looked at it to see if there's any way to help offset what we need to ask the taxpayers?
The budget hasn't, I mean, effectively, everybody even started expenses for the budget year, like I explained yesterday, and it really starts in September. Teachers start to hit the books.
Right.
So the, you know, the budget, you know, since we haven't had a lot of different impact, this is the first, you know, I always like to tell board, budgets are dynamic and complex. And this is part of the dynamism right now. Suddenly you have a bunch more kids coming in. And we will, if this happens, likely get a little more revenue from the state because we have more kids. However, we built a budget that was going to cut into fund balance about four hundred. We built a budget that was going to reduce our fund balance. To cut it a little bit into our reserves this year. That was planned for. So you know, like there's not, I could defer and do an opportunity cost. Okay, we'll hire ten, twelve more teachers. Well then, looking at budget now, not knowing really what revenue is going to go, not knowing if the public stabilization education fund is not going to be fine. Well, it's not. So likely an eight percent hit to our foundation program revenues will happen this year by the legislature. Not knowing whether they're going to go back to the enrollment rule or the ADA rule. There's a, right now, there's a lot unknowns on budget. I'm pretty good at this stuff.
Right.
But it is pretty there. So, I mean, I, we could certainly say, we're going to defer this and go do this and hire twelve more teachers. If we did that without an emergency levy and just hired twelve teachers, we're going to cut a couple million, you know, one point five million dollars to fund balance. We would, I, there's no way around this.
Okay.
That's a big chunk of change.
Yeah.
You know, unless some really great news happened in January or something. I'd love to hear that. But yeah, so we're just starting the year. So based on sort of what, all that work we did, of course, assuming we're tracking to be, you know, cutting the fund balance a little bit at the end of the year.
Okay.
Eighty-seven-ish percent of our budget is, so it leaves a small amount for
Right.
materials and electricity and gas.
Right. No, I understand.
How do you think we got so far off? I mean, that's, the numbers being reported are pretty much a full school. Um, I mean, how did we miss that? Looking back at the other numbers and, we were always pretty good, good over what actually ended up being the actuals. How did we miss so many this year?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, I'm just, I'm, how did we not budget or assume, looking at last year's budget numbers, that we were going to meet or get close to where we are? Um, because if you go back and look at, I mean, we're already here, you know, maybe it's beating a dead horse. But we were at 4,646 is what we figured last year during uh, budget committee, which obviously COVID happened, that didn't. But every year, we were pretty good about being a couple hundred above what actually ended up happening. And now this year, we're, how many students are we up again?
377 from the first three days last year to the first three days this year.
Right. Yeah. Well, last year's sort of weird, but, um, okay, so.
Are you, are you asking why you didn't build a budget based on a higher number than 4,500? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I guess, because the other budget numbers were always, you know, that every year for, um, if I go back and look at the presentations, I just don't know how we missed the mark so high.
Well, I, I built the budget based on, we we were at, yes, at 4,600.
Right.
It was our high mark two years ago. With the COVID year going down to 4,300, dropping 300, at least for the first two days. But we were at 4,400 for a good chunk of last year, if you remember, we were rolling towards, right, 4,400 was right about there. So we're down about 200 kids from behind.
Mm-hmm.
So I, this year, I have to build a budget. I have to make assumptions. Was I going to assume that we're going to get all those kids back, plus another 100? I could have built a budget on that.
Right.
Estimated more revenues. But I, I don't know sometimes to be prudent to estimate the whole thing. So I said, well, I think kids are going to come back. COVID's still around. I'll add about 100.
Yeah.
And we'll start fully grown up, which is about 2% growth, which is sort of what we've been doing. That's how I based it on experience. You know, I wish I had a crystal ball and, and knew that it was 4711, but.
Yeah. Yeah. Right. No, and I get that, just that your other numbers in previous years were pretty much on the mark.
I've had some good guesses recently.
You have. You've been very good. I'm looking back at those numbers.
That's right.
That's why I'm like, how did we miss a whole school of kids?
Yeah, COVID's definitely been there. And you've got to notice comparison from the first three days.
Right.
Last year, the first three days, it's not, uh, our numbers in January were different than the first three days last year.
Yeah, because our last year's budget was for nearly 4,700 kids. Obviously, COVID hit, we didn't have that. But that is what the budget was based on. And here we are with 4,700 kids. I wasn't here for budget, I was sitting. Um, okay. So we added a half a million dollars based up to the, uh, levy that we put out that passed, um, based upon the feedback that we got for, uh, new construction. And then, what were you saying, a half a million, somewhere about a half? Oh, no, that was the, the numbers you were hitting. Okay, a half to 2 million.
Can I, I'm not sure what you meant by new construction. So the extra, um, .52, it was actually .62 because 8.95, well, basically half a million.
Right.
Was because we have done, we have passed two instructional levies, 2017 March, 2019 March, and we had hired staff. We hadn't added anything for the cost of living that had happened over those four years. So we put in that half a million, not for construction, but just-
Well, we did, we did look at, um,
Yeah.
We did look at the, um, remember we had Mr. Arringard look at our new construction goals and-
Well, that's what she means. I thought she meant like, build something new construction and I-
Oh, no, 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 sorry. Yeah.
Community construction.
How much were outside of the growth of people's great value, right?
I just was, I was thinking, I didn't want it to be on that we were going to use some new construction was happening.
No.
Oh, no.
I see what you're saying. It's not that. I agree.
Community growth.
Yeah.
Right.
I think Randy did make a good point about, um, finding a middle ground where we can accommodate for the difference in the kids, but not increase that levy rate.
Right.
Find a, a middle ground. And then, you know, make up the difference with contingency and hopefully-
Right. Well, there, I think there's some things we can look at as far as the tech purchases. Do we use asset dollars? Would we use maybe tech fund dollars that we had planned? You know, I mean, but the first thing to do with the emergency levy would be the people part. Um, and maybe the items part, we can, we would look and see if we could move things around.
What was the difference between the staff pre-COVID and now that we need? Do we know? So you're before last, what was our staff numbers and what are they this year? Do we, or projected what we need? Do we know what those numbers are?
We,
That's fun. I just wondered if we looked at that.
Well, the COVID year, we, we-
Pre-COVID.
Yeah. So pre-COVID, we dropped about 10 s- I'm not accurate in this. We dropped about 10 certified FTEs or so, 10 or 12.
Mm-hmm.
And this budget is part of that levy. And also, um, we sort of restored back to that, to a certain extent, but not, I don't think we were able to get all the positions back. I don't know. I can't remember off the top of my head. We restored some. I don't know if we restored all of them.
Okay.
So we didn't restore all back to pre-COVID?
I think we have. I would, I want Brooke to, I don't want her to speak, so I'm like, shh. Is she on? Because we were 252 before pre-COVID for FTEs, and I think we might be at 262, but I don't want that to be in the minutes unless Brooke has verified where we're at.
Sure. Okay.
You know, just I'm hiring in this week, so it's, it isn't hard, it's hard to keep up.
She's saying she doesn't have their financial numbers, but she is available here.
Yeah. That's, that's fine.
What's her, it was 252 pre-COVID. Does she know where we're at now? Brooke, can you, sorry. Maybe she could just email you.
That's, that's fine. Um, I was just curious.
She's typing.
So the certified FTEs, um, by looking at this, those are all for elementary education, correct?
No.
No. Okay.
This is, uh, this is, makes sense to me. This is what it was during yesterday.
Okay.
I felt my, my, and I'm like, ew. Uh, so there is a, uh, you, uh, point increase at Lakeland Middle School, uh, plus one teacher teaching on his prep. Um, a 1.5 teach on the prep at Lakeland High School and a halftime half FTE. And then at Timberlake High School, which is here, um, one FTE of electives. And then at Timberlake Middle School, one FTE sixth grade electives. So we, it's kind of distributed across all of the grid bands.
Okay. It just looks like the bubbles, those elementarys, so.
At the elementary level, we have, uh, two pairs at Apple. Because we have, we've already, and one FTE at secondary. Um, Spirit Lake, two FTE, a first and then a two-three combo. She actually could have probably used more than that, but that was, they were trying to kind of limit the number of teachers. Um, at Twin Lakes, one FTE, which is a one-two combo. Um, at Garwood, three FTE. Um, at John Brown, one FTE. And at Betty Keever, one pair to assist with fourth grade.
So then where are the 13 new classrooms going?
So we will have, um, one at Apple, one at Timberlake, one at, uh, Timberlake High School, one at Timberlake Middle School, two at Spirit Lake, one at Twin, three at Garwood, a half, so that's a new classroom, you know, it's a half FTE, um, at Lakeland High School. One at John Brown, one at Mountview. And then there's a halftime teacher for SWD for each, because we don't have a support.
Can we look back to the, just so we can look at the, the others, classroom members that you were, yeah, thank you.
Randy, do you have anything else to add?
Notes.
Okay, okay.
I definitely see the numbers as presented and there's obviously, um, a rise in student population.
Right.
You know, there's a rise in everything. And I know that the law allows, uh, for such an option for the emergency levy. I think it would be burdensome. I suppose for, uh, the teachers and the staff, um, as everything's been presented to the board, if it continues this way and we don't know if there will be more kids or not more kids, or we, we don't have any way to know that. Sad that we didn't base the numbers based, you know, exclude the COVID year as we have in everything else and use those prior numbers. Same time, I have a hard time reaching into people's pockets and taking their money when they don't have a say-so. And that's, that's, uh, my dilemma, I guess you would say, if I had one, um, is that there would be no say. Although it's, you know, perceived as a miniscule amount, it's still hard to, uh, take people's money without, you know, which is basically what it is. They get no say. And we're tasked to represent them and, and so that's, that's sort of my, my thought with all that. Um, at the same time, and I know that in some instances, funds can't be taken from one thing to another, another uh, last school year and this school year, and some of it might have been, uh, CARES Act money or something. Um, but I know off the top of my head, I can account for a million dollars in laptop purchases, not including Chromebooks. So I, I, I mean, yeah, I, I don't know, uh, what to do, what to do with this. I, I haven't further, I mean, I don't, I don't have anything else to, I think we've been provided with all the information. I don't, I don't have.
Other districts are doing the same thing, although they didn't, because they're, I just feel like this morning, what I understand, and it's a hard time. It just is.
So the million four calcu- the million four calculation, um, again, was just solely based on right now, without any consideration of anything that could be pulled from the budget, correct?
Those were, that's what it would take to out of the classrooms. That's just the cost.
Right.
Um, Mr. Wallace, what, do you remember off the top of your head where our fund balance stems right now? I know you just gave that to us. Was it 5 million?
Yeah, we're around, you know, roughly, I think we're at 5.8. We're going to, you know, in a couple of weeks, I'll know more. I, and I think we're, at the end of the day, we're going to end at that, or a little bit better, 6 million or so, when the auditors zoom out, thoughtful, depending on property tax collections.
Mm-hmm.
And how much gets accrued back, um, to the last fiscal year.
Yep.
So, I mean, I don't, for 20, 2021, I don't believe we're gonna, I mean, we're gonna, we built a budget on, it was like flat, like we might add $10,000, but it's relatively flat budget. I think we're going to add to that unbalanced by, you know, add by a couple hundred thousand dollars. So that's a, that's a guess at this point, but does not look like we're going down because we have some of those grants that came in that helped out, you know, asset funds that give the shifts of the cost and things like that, or the general. So, yeah, our fund balance is in a, within policies and a healthy spot.
Now, last night, I thought you had made a statement to me that we're, because in the start of August, we were told we would be funded on enrollment, and then you came back and said, you know, they switched it again. It's now 88. And then I thought last night, you said it was going back to enrollment?
No, I suppose, yeah. Then we were hoping it would. The State Board of Education did a, a discussion about it. We had an online meeting again this morning, and the State Board is not wanting to move forward. Again, it may change again, but as of this morning, uh, the State Board is saying they do not want to do that without the legislator, legislature and then coming back. So it looks like it's going to stay, they, they, it may go in December into a temporary rule once the legislature, they will burn, name rich back. They said don't count on it. So that was what I was just told this morning.
Okay.
So we have to base ours based on, um, it will, on 88.
Right. No, I understand that.
So I feel like the board's dilemma is this. I mean, obviously, the 1.42 million is needed. Um, the dilemma is where do we take it? Do we go take it out of the voter's pocket without their say-so? Or do we- Or do we pull up our bootstraps and go back to, because of where the legislature ended, we never really got to, you know, prepare a budget with Mr. Wallace, it was so, you know, late and hurried and all of that stuff, and find something in the budget, use the fund balance or whatever. I don't, I don't I don't want to put the teachers in a bad position, and I don't want to put the students in a bad position. My recommendation would be that we look at the budget, and we look at the fund balance, and we make it work. And then look at those things that are coming down the line, or, or what have you. And do we need the pod storage at every side? Is there, I mean, is this stuff that we have to have like next year, or like, why are we saving it?
So we only have, we only have three pods, and we're using those to clear out space in schools to pay classes.
Okay, so the stuff that we're clearing out as things that we'll use in the future, okay.
They all said yesterday, we asked about it, and they said we took John Brown for loads to the dump, they got rid of stuff that didn't go with, that's one of the teachers shared, go with was good for me to go through all this stuff and get rid of stuff I wasn't using. So would you say that's accurate, say that we, the stuff that we want to keep, it was possible to reuse? Isn't it, on the fund balance, board policy, I think we're at the amount that's in the board policy, I don't know if, could you bring up that board policy, Kristi?
Yeah, it's eighteen, sixteen, sixteen.
I, I would strongly discourage us taking from, once you take money, it's one-time money, you take it from the fund balance, it, it doesn't go back there. It's taken six years to get it up from an A to $12,666.36 up to the amount that's in board policy, and I would strongly discourage us taking any money from the fund balance.
We've used the fund balance to cover the other costs in the past, most recently last year.
These will be, with this enrollment increase, this will not be one-time cost. Certified teachers, if we have this enrollment and we stay, it will only, in my opinion, we're only gonna grow projections and looking at, talking with the city, talking with the county, the regional housing we're on, it just keeps growing, growing, this will be reoccurring cost for us to continue if we take money from one time, then the taxpayers will basically say, we'll just take it from our fund balance, it's like taking it from your savings account, but you're gonna have a recurring bill that's gonna keep coming in, and once we get to next year, we won't be able to go to fund balance every year for it, so it needs to have a sustainable way for us to to continue. I don't think it's a good message for us to send that we take it from our, the fund balance.
Right, I understand that, but this is a one-time thing we're trying to solve because we did underestimate. And the thing we hear in the community all the time is that we have a savings account, and we're always asking for more money. So, I don't know that the consensus of the public would be against us using the fund balance, however much we have to use, I don't know, to meet the needs just to get through this year. And then next year, you know, Mr. Wallace will work his magic with his...
But, Kristi, there's not magic though, because...
With your numbers of, to the state about what your projection of enrollment is.
We will get the numbers to the state, we'll, we'll earn the money that the state gives us through the foundation program. So we're gonna earn money with the $4,700, and that's what I said, I think we may have more state revenues coming to help cover these costs. The state only funds us, even, think of every kid, every kid that we get is 75 cents on the dollar. We have a levy that covers 25% of our operating costs, so they only fund us for about 75%, so if we have 100 new kids, then we've incurred 25% more costs on the local, because they don't fully fund us. That's up the bottom line. So if we use our fund balance to fully cover the cost of those, of those kids, then that's not sustainable, because sustain it for a year or two in fund balance, but pretty soon we'd be back down to zero. So, and with, unless they change the funding formula at the state and we get more dollars, you know, through apportionment or through that, but right now, we know with legislative action that we are gonna take mid-year cuts, they've told us that. The Public Stabilization Education Fund is going to, they are not using this year by law, and that typically provided 8% of our discretionary funding unit cost. So if we get $28,000 per unit, we're probably only gonna get $22,000 a unit. And we won't know that till the end of July next year. So there's a, I'm, I'm, I guess what I'm saying is that whether I budgeted for the the extra units that we would have earned for 477, what would have shown then would have been, instead of $500,000 deficit, maybe we had a $300,000 surplus. So I would have shown that we're having more revenues, and it looks like we're gonna be in the black for the year, as opposed to being the negative for the year. That's what budget would have shown. Typically, our district has not hired for additional kids until we see the lights of the rise. We, we certainly could hire in March, and the principals would love us if we did that. But if you hire, then they don't show, you own that teacher now. And so part of the reason we're coming with emergency levy is that we typically hold back so that we don't own a teacher by law for that year, and maybe have overstaffed. And we've heard feedback on that in the public too, that you have too many teachers on staff. So, I mean, the narrative coming, we could, there's a lot of aspects to this, but I guess what I'm saying is that I can project more attendance and revenue, but budget's just a projection, and the dollars will be what the dollars are at the end. And the state does not cover fully the cost of all these new kids, they just don't, I wish they did. But they don't fully fund education, and that's why there's large levies in post falls, Lakewood, Coeur d'Alene, across the state.
Yeah, and I, I understand everything that you said. I wasn't saying that it was a sustainable thing, year after year after year, we use the fund balance. What I'm saying is, we just watched a couple budget presentations where we used over nearly a half a million dollars to cover other costs out of the fund balance, and then moved the money when it was funded. You just said that it's possible that some of this money would come back from the state. The way I look at it is this, we have this school year, we have this issue we need to deal with at this school year. Next year, a budget process, hopefully we have more time, and the board is more involved in the budget so that we can find the money. All I'm saying is, we have to solve this right now. And the only way we can solve this unless we want to go reach in people's bank accounts and take the money without their asking, even though the law permits it, but not everything under the law is moral and right, just because it's leaks, leaks. I do not want to do that. So my, my, I'm, I'm being asked to resolve this thing. The solution is that we have to go back to the budget, and we have to look at the budget, even if we have to submit an amended, amended budget, and we possibly have to use some of the fund balance. That's the, that's my resolution. I'm not asking to do it year after year. All I'm saying is, as time, as we go forward, you know, hopefully it'll work its way out. I think that it, again, is a product of COVID and the influx of people, which I think was also probably a product of COVID to our state. That, that was my my suggestion, that's where I came.
Right, and I definitely understand, I don't want to argue, I, I understand your confidence, Kristi, from, I've sat in that seat, so I definitely understand.
You sat here when we had the deficit that Dr. Meyer incurred.
Correct, under, under the greatest budget cuts ever from the State of Education.
Absolutely.
So, what I'm, I guess what, all I'm telling you is that the, the budget on the general fund is, and like I say it every month, is people, right?
Right.
So we can look at the budget in March, and if we are gonna find the dollars, it's either having less people or paying them less. There's, that's just the reality. So when you're saying find the dollars, then that would be saying, okay, well, what positions are we eliminating? Or can we reduce the cost of what we're doing? We can't do that. We just increased class size, that was 60%, that's a $500,000 just to try to keep up with Taco Bell.
Right.
So, I, you know, the dollars are, are all tied to people. And so as we look at the budget, that's really what we're looking at, and then how many kids we're serving. And that is, that, I mean, my budget presentations always show, you know, I have a picture of this kids, and I have a picture of the staff, because kids are driving our revenues, to the extent they do, and the staff is driving our cost to the extent we do. And you can certainly look at the items and stuff, because that's important. But the big decisions are like when we negotiate with the teachers and, you know, cover those costs, and those are the, those are the biggies. You know, if we set class size targets, which I'm all for, my, my kids are going through the system, I have a freshman at Lakewood High School as far as some of those big freshman classes, so I would certainly love to have some of those reduced. You know, but that's not fully funded by the state, some of those things, I mean, I mean, that's just sort of where it is, those are where the big costs are.
Yeah, agreed, yeah, absolutely agree with the largest cost being salaries, benefits, all those things, but I think there's also other things that are not mandated by statute that might be able to be cut in order to provide the education. I, I have no further discussion then, to...
Okay. Did I understand you correctly, Brian, that well, I guess, can you help me understand if the budget would have been based off of a rate of, or of the student population of 4,700? Would we be still be asking for an emergency levy?
Yes, we don't, I have to, because the, because the the emergency levy is purely based on the three days of attendance, this and that.
Right.
And so it's not, it's not looking at where I build budget, as far as the statute.
Okay.
If I estimated, let's say that we're gonna have 4,700 kids, I then translate that to how many funding units that would generate. Let's say it generates another 10 funding units. So every 10 funding units is approximately another million dollars, or 100,000, so say a million bucks. So my budget would have reflected $1,000 more projected revenues. We don't know if it's gonna be actual, it's just projected.
Correct.
No, I'm sorry. So my budget, my current budget right now has a $500,000 deficit. So if I projected another million dollars of revenues, I could have a $500,000 surplus. Now, with that surplus, would we have said, okay, we'll hire six more teachers in budget? Possibly. I don't know, but I don't think we would have built another 14 teachers in there, if I estimated another million dollars, because I think we've been estimating just that we wouldn't have had a deficit this year. But I'm not gonna be able to build the budget on where I thought we were gonna be, and be relatively conservative with all the unknowns of COVID.
Okay.
And 75% of the comes from the first 10 weeks of school, first Friday of November. We have our ADA for students, the average daily attendance for students, on the first Friday of November, 75% of our budget comes from that small window. That's how it's built in the state. So it's very difficult to project. And we have the SBA salary-based proportion of that. Mr. Wallace has explained before, that's based on weighted average, it's not each teacher. You go over the allocation from the state, they only give you the weighted amount, if you have an experienced teacher, you lose. I mean, it's just very, very complicated. So for him to project where we're gonna be, it really is, like he said, we have to try to get as many students as we can that are not feeling sick in this environment at school to get the funding. So it's a very, very that's why we're back looking after, afterwards. And when we do try to be fiscally, very fiscally conservative, I think all the principals would agree, they probably wish I wasn't as fiscally conservative as I've been, that when you have a negative balance, you're trying to get to a positive balance. This is sort of the auditors would like, it's in the board policy. I just would hate to start to dip into that for staffing. I just don't think that's a very good recommendation on my part.
And it's my perspective that, as budgets go, we've let off the gas pedal on putting that fund balance, building that fund balance up. The budget this year was a $500,000 deficit to basically eat into that. So, at this point, my opinion, or my perspective, is that we've achieved the fund balance to to bridge the gaps when, you know, the summer's here and we're not getting any, any revenues, but we're not, we're not budgeting to keep putting stuff away, we're using, like you say, you know, we were planning on using $500,000 of that, of that fund balance for the budget this year. It's not like, and it's coming out of my pocket too. I mean, it's not something that, you know, that I am excited about, but again, if we, if, I, I think if we can find some middle ground so that they can hire some teachers to offset all the kids that we have, but we don't, you know, we don't, as Ramona would say, reaching into the pockets, we don't, you know, take everything that we can find. I mean, obviously, per statute, we could X number of dollars. I don't think, I think we just need to take what we absolutely bare minimum need to get the teachers in the classrooms so that the class sizes are smaller. That's just my perspective. I don't wanna... And I'm concerned about where the funds are actually going to fall this year, because we aren't out of COVID.
Right.
Wish we were, but, so there's still a great unknown in that aspect too.
Right.
Which is, is really makes this difficult.
Right, no, there's a lot of great unknowns, but anytime we have a problem, I mean, with the standard, we, we don't even acknowledge the fund balance is there, we're not gonna touch it, but we're willing to go over here to everyone else's pocket. I don't think that's, that's approach. So, that, I, I just think it's a mentality that the taxpayers are always gonna have to bail us out, they're gonna have to give more, they're gonna have to do more, their taxes have to keep growing and coming and growing and coming. I mean, it just, the attitude with the last levy that was projected by the taxpayers, that barely passed. And if we're constantly just emergency levying and taking money anyway, what are we saying to people? Our fund balances may be stabilized from last, from the COVID year to here, didn't grow, but it grew the year before, and it grew the year before that, and it grew the year before that, and Dr. Meyer just said that emergency levies were during those times. So I, me personally, I don't see why I am taking from the constituents when maybe we need to look in our own house and figure out how to clean it up. And that's just my perspective, if we want I mean, I want my schools to have what they, they want to educate the children. Most definitely. So, that in and of itself, I don't necessarily believe that we have to constantly go back to the taxpayer and say, pay more, pay more, pay more. But that's, that's my opinion, so.
I would like to have it in the minutes that our district has had an A audit every year since I've been here, and we went from a negative, a B negative trend on the Moody's up to an A positive with an upward trend. And I don't think cleaning our house is our issue, it's a defense to that.
Is there any more conversation to be had?
I'm sorry that Dr. Meyer took offense to that, but I don't think that that was the intention.
No, there was no offense meant.
It would be nice for you to explain that then, because I think when it occurs, it would be clean our own house, that didn't sound-
I, when we're not even willing to go back to our own budget before we go to the taxpayers, I think that is inappropriate. I think we should look at everything we have before we go to people and force taxes on them. That is me. I will always look within my own resources to say, what do I need to look at? We're talking for one year. We're not talking for five years that we're just gonna do that, we're talking for this year, to get through this year. And, I personally would always go back to what I'm accountable for and my responsibilities before I went and said, please give me more money, that's what I'm referring to as cleaning house. I asked you if we've even looked at the budget and you said no. So, that personally bothers me.
I didn't say no, I said that we have already budgeted for this year. We've already budgeted, we have, already have budget, everything's, so we will have to give up something to, in order to put this into the general fund, that's what I said, I didn't say we didn't look at our budget.
That's part of life, that's what everybody does, it's a given to me.
Okay, I don't want to make this contentious.
Yep.
Our job is to take the, the information and bring it to you, your job is to ask questions, and if you don't vote for it, that's up to you. Our job is to say, this is what we believe is best for educating the students. We all went and spent a lot of time to say, what's best for the students? We know that the board wants low class sizes because you did a board policy on it. So our job is to bring it to you, if you don't vote for it, that's your right, you're the elected officials. All we're saying is, we run a very tight ship here, we are very fiscally conservative. They will tell you, I have been very fiscally conservative, and they wish we weren't as fiscally conservative. So yes, we've looked at our budget, we will not be able to hire 12.2 teachers, we'll be able to figure out how to get some by cutting back other areas, which we've done for the last six years. We're all gonna pull up our bootstraps, we live in North Idaho, we work in this district, and we will do it, but we won't be able to hire and keep the class sizes as low as we recently liked. If that's what the board's desire is, that we don't do an emergency levy, we certainly will look, and as a group, we will try to find as many solutions as we can. I just don't want it to be out in the public perception that we need to clean our house, because we don't need to clean our house, we have a very clean house, we do the best we can with the money we have, in the state of Idaho, we're like 49th out of 51 in the entire nation, so we do a darn good job on what we're, we're given, so I just want that acknowledged versus us looking to clean house.
Well, I apologize if my phrasing was inappropriate.
So, call out a question, if they don't do a, if there's no motion, is the meeting just ended, or does it, do you have to do a motion, I'm not sure, I haven't been in this spot.
I haven't called for a motion yet.
I'm just asking if there is a-
Yeah.
Randy, do you have anything else to contribute? Are you still there, Randy?
No, no, I said my, I said my part.
Okay, not to worry. Okay, so then, I'll entertain a motion on the emergency levy for the 2021, 2022 school year, as presented by administration.
I would like to make a motion to find a middle ground and to authorize a million-dollar levy to keep the, the tax base below what we were last year, and to hire as many staff as we need to to address the the extra kids that we have. So I would entertain approving a million-dollar emergency levy.
I would second that motion.
All right, hearing a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay? Two ayes and three nays, the motion fails.
Thank you, Randy, are you okay typing up now?
So, today's motion, we- I should have amended the motion. What's that? I said I was gonna amend the motion? Oh, for what, well, because-